Well, morning everyone and thank you for taking the time out in your very busy days to come to this PPMA webinar. I'm Mark, Mark Porter and I'm the head of HR at OneSource and also a board member of PPMA. And OneSource is the shared organisation that provides services to Hering and Newham councils in London, as well as other organisations too. And I'm your host for the webinar this morning. Just to give you a heads up, this is one of a series of webinars that's focusing on the winners of our PPMA awards at the PPMA conference in Manchester back in April. So if you're there, you'll probably see my dad dancing as well at the conference. But today, we're delighted to be joined by Alison Glover, who's the Health and Safety Manager at Tameside Metropolitan Borough Council. And Alison and her team won the Service Superstar Award. So welcome to Alison.
Thanks. Thank you.
And so Alison's going to tell us all about the good things that they've done at Tameside and about their award entry too, which will be great to hear. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we start. So the session is being recorded so that anyone who can't attend today can watch it and catch up. But don't worry though, because only the presenter and me and Alison will be visible on the recording. And but you can keep your camera on if you want to, that's absolutely fine. But the only other thing I was going to ask is if we can all turn our mics off during the presentation, so that there's no background noise. And then we then we'll have the opportunity for questions at the end. Although, you know, if you want to, you can add questions in the chat as we go along and we can pick those up from there. And so just again, a little bit of background before we hand over to Alison. Alison and the team were the winners of the Service Superstar Award. And the judges said of their awards submission that they went above and beyond to support not only the council but schools and the voluntary sector through a very difficult period during the COVID-19 pandemic. And they went above and beyond to ensure the guidance was followed and schools remain compliant as well as supporting voluntary groups, which are absolutely critical to supporting the most vulnerable clients. So I'm looking forward to hearing all about what the team did. That's enough from me. Alison, over to you.
Thank you. I shall just share my screen then. Okay, lovely. So thanks again. I have to say, we were absolutely delighted when we we won the award. And it's interesting really, because when you're putting this presentation together, you're really, like you said, bigging yourselves up. And it doesn't come naturally to do that in a lot of cases. And when I was reflecting and thinking, right, well, how do I illustrate to everybody what we did? Because it was a time that everybody went above and beyond, everybody did a lot of extra during that time. I thought to myself, well, if somebody in February 2020, if my manager had come to me and said, right, Alison, apart from what you and your team do normally day to day, we're going to give you this extra to do list, which is like a stream of mammoth tasks and you've got to do that as well within the next 18 months. Then we would have just thought it was completely impossible and an insurmountable task. But actually, that is, you know, exactly what we achieved, a massive amount of extra work that we wouldn't have done normally and not least collaborating and working with lots of other teams. So that was kind of what I wanted to illustrate today. Some of the work that we did and how that caused us to to build some really good working relationships as well. So just a little bit of background. The the actual team itself was still relatively new. I joined the organisation in October 2018. And at that time, there was only one health and safety officer due to redundancies and things like that. So we'd really only just recruited the team that had come together fully at the end of 2019. And in addition to advising all the services within the organisation, and it probably should be pointed out, we're probably quite in the minority in local authorities because we encompass all our services in-house. We don't outsource waste, social care, et cetera. Everything is basically done in-house for us. So we already had a wide variety of different services that we would advise. We vary in risk levels. But on top of that, we also trade a service level agreement for our health and safety advice to schools. And at this time, we had 66 schools as well buying into that service. So just every day, it was, you know, we were kept on our toes, we had plenty to be doing. And when COVID first came about in the early days, obviously, like everybody, nobody knew what was going to happen. But we had an inclination that it may be that we were going to have to start doing some level of work from home. So we had to prepare for that. And I'd been in the Lake District for a friend's wedding and came back. And literally overnight, everybody had started working from home. So I was set up on the kitchen table. My team, that were likewise, some in bedrooms, some in the kitchen table, some, you know, in the living room. And what the focus was at that time was as an organisation, looking at all of our frontline services. So I don't think anybody in those first couple of weeks really realised what health and safety would need to do, what the implications would be. So we were seconded almost into our bereavement services team to help support and add some resilience to ensure that the crematorium would still be able to operate, that burials would still be able to take place. We had other members of the organisation moving across to like waste services because we knew you would always need to have those services operating. So that was the real initial focus, keeping those essential services running. But then obviously, as time went on, and it was very quickly, it soon became clear with all the guidance that started coming out that health and safety was going to have to do health and safety. So everyone was pulled back out of crem services and we started focusing on the health and safety side. And it was just the skills that as a health and safety team you have, you are good at researching and interpreting because you can't keep all of the health and safety legislation and approved codes of practice in your head. So you've got to reference and research all the time. And that was really something that was of massive value because overnight we had to become experts in COVID and the right control measures. And it felt like from being maybe this small part of the organisation who, you know, we were cooperated with because we had to be in certain areas of health and safety. All of a sudden, if anybody had a question, it was, well, you need to check with health and safety. Ask health and safety. Health and safety will tell you what you have to do about that. So we were getting all kinds of queries like, can we use hand dryers? What type of hand sanitizer? Why do we have to have alcohol alcohol-based sanitizer? Schools were asking, why are you telling us to use bleach to clean when normally we're told not to and to find something that's safer? What if we buy a fogging machine? Does that just resolve everything? And everything was just coming into us. And some of those questions, actually, we couldn't answer because they were more about an infection prevention and control kind of basis. And so we, from that point on, as I say, very early days, we started working really closely with our population health directorate and in particular, the assistant director and the consultants within population health. We referred to as, you know, quite a good team at that time. And in terms of managing the risk for for COVID, obviously, we were familiar with risk assessments. We were, it's our bread and butter. But this was just something altogether different. Particularly is the the demand came that we had to be COVID secure in all of our offices and areas that were open to the public and members of staff and that there had to be very specific COVID risk assessments completed. So thinking about not just our services, but also the schools, we put together a library almost of generic templates. So we did one for primary schools, one for secondary schools, one for our services that may be working out in the field with the public, any that were office-based but needed to be in the office where maybe our environmental health officers had to go and do visits to public, you know, members of the public in their businesses. So we had a whole different range because whilst people may have done risk assessments before, if it was daunting to us, it was going to be immensely daunting to them. So we put out a range of templates. We said, make it specific to your area. But then what we want you to do, when you send them back to us, and the team checked all of them and liaised with each service, each school, where there were queries, where they weren't sure what measures had to be put in place, that's what they did. But aside from that, you also had sets of really vulnerable members of the community, not just within the community, sorry, but rather within our workforce as well. So there'd been certain members of the population that had been highlighted as particularly at risk from the from COVID and the impact that it could have. And one of those was expectant mothers. And so we had to put together a template to assess whether certain members of our workforce might also need an individual risk assessment aside from the COVID secure arrangements that we had in place, extra things that we may need to consider. And particularly with expectant mothers, the advice early on was really quite strong. And certainly around in the third trimester, that they potentially should all be working from home. So it was really important that these individual risk assessments were addressed as well. So there too, we worked with all the services and schools where they had to put those into place as well. So as I said, every single service and school, they sent their risk assessments back to us for us to check. And then there was also the issue of DSE, display screen equipment. So at first, when everybody went home to work, it was acceptable that, you know, there were going to be some quirky arrangements in place. Some people weren't going to have the all singing and dancing office setup at home. They were going to be on the kitchen table. They may well be sat on the settee with a lap tray using their laptop. But as time went on and it looked, it was going, this was going to be a much longer range arrangement, we had to seriously look at our DSE setup for these people working at home. And we had to review our self-assessment tools and get that out and get everybody at home to complete those. We had to convince services that this was essential because there was kind of a belief that because people were at home, that it wasn't really our responsibility. It was up to them to make that arrangement. So we had to make it really clear, well, no, this still falls under the DSE regs. Whether you're based in an office or at home, you've got to have the right setup and arrangements in place. We got a training, an online training tool for people to watch, to help them get their setup right. And we have still got a bit of a legacy fallout from this because as we got people realising, you've got to get a good setup at home. Obviously, screens disappeared from the office. Quite rightly, they weren't doing anything in the office. They needed to be at home and being used to help people so they weren't going to have long-term musculoskeletal issues. But there is a little bit of a legacy to that now in that, you know, I think there are some areas where we're not 100% where those screens have gone unfortunately. But it was the right thing to do at the time because it was bad enough, the scenario, if people were then going to, as a result of this, end up with, you know, some long-term discomfort or workplace injury, that was going to be even worse. And how could we defend that? And bear in mind, this was all guidance that was coming out from the HSE as well. And they had been making various spot checks, certainly through, I would say, from about August in 2020. They were doing checks to lots of different sites of ours. I think if I remember rightly, most of the focus for us, they did visit our workshop, but they also focused around libraries, which would make sense because that would be where, when they were open, the members of the public would be and there's more likely to be some transmission. But all the feedback we got from the HSE was great. They were pleased with the the measures that we'd got in place and the support systems that we were offering to all of our services. And the local HSE inspector contacted us to help make arrangements to visit a number of our schools. I think there were about 12 schools that they scheduled in to see. They'd previously telephoned all the schools and got some feedback. And where they'd not got quite the feedback they wanted, then they wanted to do an in-person visit. So we'd scheduled all the visits and following the first visit, unfortunately, the inspector tested positive for COVID, which did result in some isolations at some of us from the school that they'd visited. And we had to reschedule the rest. So there was a slight irony there. But in any case, when they eventually went ahead, they were all absolutely fine. And we accompanied the HSE on those visits because we wanted to be there to see and support the schools because we knew they had the right measures in place and we didn't want them to feel uncomfortable answering the questions and give the impression that they didn't have the right measures there. So that's why we went along and supported the schools. And I think the schools probably deserve a mention. I mean, the work they did was immense over COVID. There was sometimes a real, a bit of a tussle between schools and being an education provider and having its own set of guidance to follow and it being a workplace because the teachers clearly couldn't isolate socially distanced from the pupils. It was obvious there were going to be outbreaks once the schools were back in. And as a result of that, our population health, they started to hold outbreak meetings. So any school that had any student or member of staff who tested positive, if there were four, once there were four cases, there was a meeting scheduled. We did it. It was done over Zoom or Teams. And that was with population health, someone from our health and safety team and people from the school. And that was to review and see how had that had that transmission occurred in school? Was there any similarity between classrooms? Was there any coincidence in any lunchtime or playtime activities? Did they have the right measures in place? Could we identify that they weren't segregating groups effectively? And in the early days of those outbreak meetings, we were able to really drill down and identify some extra measures that could be put in place. But obviously, as time went on, the schools were just as much experts in this as we were because they'd worked with it day to day and they'd put so much effort into it. So towards the end, it was incredibly difficult to identify if there's anything more really that could be done. It was just there. And if you had people in that environment closely together, it was going, there was going to be transmission. In total, we supported population health with 152 outbreak meetings in schools. And then alongside that, we had some in our workplaces as well. Particularly where we had services that couldn't social distance, they were public facing, they had to carry on. So waste services in particular, that was high risk for us. Because obviously, you had the lawyers travelling in the same vehicle with the driver. If one of those guys tested positive, it was literally going to go throughout the crew. We did try and have systems whereby we would use a vehicle and they would drive behind the waste vehicles. They weren't all sharing the same space. But it was just, it was a lot of trial and error. And ultimately, we had to accept that there was going to be some transmission throughout those areas. We also had the the elections that had been scheduled for March, May 2020, and they were postponed. But they were going ahead in May 21. And we had 99 sites that were identified as that would have polling stations at them. And we risk assessed every single one of those sites. Now, my team and me, we couldn't have done that on our own. We had a lot of support from our environmental health officers because they had that health and safety experience as well. So every site where a polling station would be, be at a church, a church hall, a school, a community centre, they were all visited individually, risk assessed and specific controls for that site identified. One-way routes, was that practical to do? Would we need screens? How many polling booths? How far apart could they be distanced? It was a real challenging time doing those, but the the team did incredibly well to do them. And webinars, I mean, here we are now, it's just normal, isn't it now to do a webinar? But I think pre-COVID, I don't know if I even knew what one was, to be honest. I don't know if we'd ever heard of them before COVID. I can't tell you how many we did. We did so many of them, particularly for the schools. Every time there was a new bit of guidance, it was far easier to have a webinar like this to go through the guidance, what it meant, and give an opportunity for questions than it was to send out a communication. So that's what we did. And invariably, it was with population health, with the Assistant Director of Public Health. And we would run the, we would run the sessions, as I say, lots of questions. They weren't without humour. My cat's generally made a visit or two during the sessions. We're lucky today, actually. He's around, but he's not not made a, not made an appearance. But they were so good in that you could get such a lot of information across in one go. But what it did mean was because once guidance had been published, we had to quickly turn it around and get it out to everybody. We, you know, it was a case of really absorbing and interpreting very quickly. We also used that that system to be able to communicate with social care organisations as well, be that voluntary ones or those that had been commissioned. So we would regularly have webinars for those guys too. And that really was one of the most challenging areas because we were only offering really advice into how we interpreted that guidance. We couldn't tell them, you must do this, you must do this. And what was very difficult was the balance between following the the regulations and the guidance, but also considering the detrimental impact of their services not going ahead. So for example, local groups that may operate a nitter natter, which seems very inconsequential, but it might be the only time in the week that an elderly or vulnerable person from a particular, particular area got to see anyone. So during the lockdown periods, they'd not seen anybody, they'd not been able to go out. So as the regulations relaxed, could we start doing these? These were the questions that we were asked, you know. Can't we get these people back in to have a cup of coffee and a nitter natter? And it was whether, was that an essential service? Or was it outside of the the exceptions for the guidance? And I don't think we ever got to the right answer for that, but that really showed what a challenge it was because these social care services, they were really working with the most vulnerable people who needed that support and they needed that interaction. But equally, we're at the greatest risk if they were to contract COVID as well. So we, we really tried hard to advise, but we have retained contact with a lot of those voluntary services. And population health were amazing because obviously, that's an area, they're much more, have much more expertise than us certainly in the infection prevention, et cetera. So it was, yeah, challenging, difficult, but quite rewarding to be able to help those groups as well. And of course, all of this was alongside the the normal day-to-day stuff. Accidents didn't stop happening. We still had to investigate if there were accidents or incidents. We wanted to continue our audits of schools because we didn't want them to fall behind in, you know, managing health and safety generally. But of course, there were requirements to limit the numbers of people going on-site to the schools to reduce those risks of transmission. So we tended to do, we looked at doing and put into place a remote system of auditing, which more focused on the paperwork side of the safety management system, but it kept, it kept it in the fore and it kept work going with regards to health and safety. We kept our links, sorry, we we carried on also doing our training and again, so we really embraced webinars, basically. We couldn't do in-person training at this time. We wanted to keep training and keep the impetus around risk assessments, around recording and reporting accidents. So we put together webinars and we are still using those now, to be honest with you. And anything else that crops up? That is health and safety, isn't it? And what I just wanted to say as well, because it is, you know, it's difficult going through, this is everything that we did. There are things I've missed out probably as well. But what I thought was important to say was this has brought with it really huge benefits. It's definitely raised the profile of health and safety within the organisation. Whereas we've always been involved in projects that were ongoing, but maybe haven't had a seat around that table right in the first instance. I think now that we do, you know, everybody knows the team within the organisation. And I feel we do some really strong work for for Tameside, which has made all the easier because of what we went through with COVID. Another benefit, everybody knows what a risk assessment is now, don't they? Even if they don't yet quite grasp that they're needed for things other than COVID, but we are fighting to get that message through. And we've kept our links with voluntary services. We do provide some free training just to feel that we're giving something back to the community and it's little time of hours to be able to do that for them. And the webinars, I think, are fantastic. There is still a place for in-person training, absolutely there is. But what we've found with the webinars is that we get better attendance because an hour's session is an hour. It's not half a day because you've got to go and park. So you do tend to get more people coming along to them. And because of that as well, we can put them on more frequently. So we get through more people. So we get a lot more. You know, I think we're being able to deliver a lot better in terms of our training. And I thought I'd just round off by showing a picture of the team, very happy there to win the award. That's us stood in our, our offices. It's called Tameside One. And we've got the town skyline of Ashton just behind us there. And I'll just round up there. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. That was a quick canter through, very quick canter through of everything that you and the team have been doing. So any questions from anybody there? I mean, there was a couple of things I was just going to ask around. So certainly, you talked about the links of the voluntary and community groups, Alison, as well. And is that something that you think you'll you'll absolutely be able to build on afterwards too as well?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've already been out and done some training with one of the groups just a couple of months ago, actually. And we have a regular session that we have set up now, where twice a year, one of the organisation that that works with voluntary groups around the borough and the neighbouring borough, actually, we've set up some training sessions and we just turn up and deliver the training for them. And then, you know, they invite whoever, whoever they want to come along to that. So, yeah, most definitely.
Right. I mean, that's another, you know, a whole range of sort of other people that you can kind of tap into and kind of work with and connections there too. Okay, so we've got a question here. Hi.
Hi, hi. I'm Michelle Hart, by the way. I did, I did the last webinar, so. Yeah, so, yeah, and I really enjoyed it. So I thought I'd come along and and see some, some more stuff. But, yeah, I mean, for me, it all sounds like you really, really got to grips with COVID really, really quickly. And, and I suppose in terms of what learning other organisations can take forward, do you, do you set up networks? Do you talk, I mean, you're obviously doing this, but do you, do you go and talk to the local authorities about that experience or?
I haven't done, no. I mean, we do have, within Greater Manchester, we've got a network of health and safety managers within Greater Manchester. And we meet two or three times a year. So we share a lot of learning. And, you know, it's almost a pool of advice. If we've got queries, we'll throw an email out. So that really is probably my only network, I'll be honest, at the moment.
I suppose my second question was just around, now that you've gone through everything that you've, that you've done and that whole kind of debrief moment, because people often, I have to look from the psychological perspective because that's kind of like where I come from, is the long-term impact of COVID in terms of the survivor syndrome that we've been through? In terms of, you know, we're working at home agile and obviously, the physical stuff that you mentioned is really important. But, you know, loneliness, all this other stuff around cost of living, all that, all those other pressures. How health and safety, now they're at the table, feel that they can kind of influence that kind of thing would be of interest, just to know.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that I didn't mention there, what we also did, what became really apparent because obviously, we did have a number of members of staff who really struggled, who couldn't work at home. So we had to make arrangements for them to come into the office, regardless of what the restrictions were. We had to do that for their own safety and sanity in some cases. But that also led us to review our stress management procedures. So we did that during COVID because we knew, we identified that it was too reactive. We didn't, it didn't consider those things, you know, and we didn't, it wasn't proactive enough in considering controls that needed to be done in scenarios like this. And day to day as well. So we did, we actually did a huge piece of work on that. And made it a bit more tailored towards the management standards as well.
Brilliant. Brilliant. Thank you.
That's a really good question, Michelle. And I think, you know, you're absolutely right. We focused on getting through things and. We we focused on getting through things and, you know, making things happen and get getting. You know, absolutely sort of like serving and working with the the community and our staff and our teams as well. But it is that long term effect that we need to be absolutely sort of thinking and focusing on and and so on. And helping ourselves through all of that as well. So, yeah, that's an excellent question. Okay, anything else from anybody or? Okay, so, well, I thought you never thought, Alison, you'd be advising on nittin' natter sessions and things to do when you when you started out.
Honestly, I can't tell you some of the questions, oh my word.
I imagine. So listen, well, thanks everyone for making the time to come to the webinar this morning. Thanks again to Alison for an excellent presentation. And hopefully, that's given, you know, everyone food for thought, things that you can actually take back to your own team as well. And hopefully, it's also made you think about putting together a submission for next year's P P M A awards, when the details come out shortly. So, and as I said earlier, this is one of a series of webinars that are showcasing the award winners. And our next webinar is this Friday, the night of September at twelve noon. Where our speakers will be Leicestershire County Council, who were the winners of the best workforce transformation and change initiative. So it'd be great to hear about that as well. So if you're able to make that, that's fantastic. Or share and let other colleagues know about that, that'd be great too. So thank you again, everyone, and see you soon at another P P M R webinar or in-person event. Thanks.
Thank you.